Twenty-one meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education. This is a work meeting today, scheduled today. And in accordance with the state sunshine law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on January 6th, 2021 to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier-News. May I have a roll call? Mrs. San Giuliano?
Sure. Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Mr. Marini?
Here.
Ms. Maroon?
Here.
Ms. Nurse?
Here.
Mr. Oliver?
Yeah.
Mr. Pulcifer? I think I just promoted him to panelist, I believe.
Yep.
Okay. Ms. Stats?
Here.
And Mr. Gio?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. May we all now rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'd like to now turn the floor over to Gwen Thornton, our field services rep from New Jersey School Boards Association, who will be leading the board in ethics training first. Then we will break briefly for public comments. And then we will move on to a discussion of framework for board goals. Our meeting notice did indicate that our meeting would end. The goal is at 8:30 PM. So we will try to be mindful of everyone's time tonight. Thank you very much, and I'll turn it over to Gwen.
There we are. Good evening. I'm Gwen Thornton from New Jersey School Boards. I know a lot of you, but welcome to your new board member, folks. It's nice to see new faces as well as those that I know. I presently serve Somerset, Huntington and Union Counties. And my role with the association is to provide direct assistance for governance for boards of education. So this evening, we're going to be working through your annual ethics training, which is required by law. And so that is what we're going to work on. And actually, the School Ethics Act is found in NJSA 12-23.1. And it really is designed to ensure that the public has trust and confidence in the Board of Education and that board members avoid any possible violation of the public trust or create an impression of a violation among the public. And so it's important for board members to be aware that they need to make sure that their behavior and the code of ethics guides their conduct. It also ensures that there is a disciplinary mechanism to maintain that standard among all board members. Provisions of this act also apply to charter school trustees and also to school administrators, school leaders in general. And just as a note for all of you, the professional staff at New Jersey School Boards Association also abides by the code of ethics and files financial disclosure forms the same way the Board of Education members do. I, in a past life, was a board member in Somerset County. I'm a long, longtime Somerset County resident and have sat on your bleachers for many, an hour when my kids were in school. So it's certainly something that, as a board member, I was proud to be a member of the group at the time. The School Ethics Act also is part of CUSAC, New Jersey Quality Single Accountability Continuum. For those of you who may be new, you will find that there are a million acronyms in education. It's really the state's monitoring system. And in the Governance District Performance Review, it does require that you have an annual discussion around the code of ethics. And so I did send to your business administrator a copy of the sign-off form that needs to be signed by you and that assures the Commissioner of Education through the executive county superintendent that you have dutifully conducted this training. So the School Ethics Act established the School Ethics Commission, which is commonly referred to as the SEC. The code of ethics itself, specifics around conflicts of interest, what's permissible and what's not. The requirement for an annual financial disclosure statement that you do online. In the old days, we used to have to fill them out duplicate and then sign the originals and submit them. But now it's done online, which is much easier for all of you. And then it also lays out the training requirements for Board of Education members. Board of Education members in the state of New Jersey are some of the nation's best educated board members. And so we're going to talk about each one of those pieces. The School Ethics Commission is composed of nine individuals, two board members, two school administrators, who are typically superintendents, and then five non-school officials, who are appointed by the governor, who serve for three-year terms. And no more than five of those individuals can be from the same political party, which is fitting, given the Board of Education are non-affiliated and they are not driven by political parties. So the SEC remains nonpartisan as well. You're elected by a partisan election, and the SEC is nonpartisan in its composition by its design. In terms of training, you're required, as a new board member, to attend GOV1. We generally abbreviate it just by GOV1, which is New Board Member Orientation. And it really is designed to provide the skills and knowledge necessary for you to serve. In statute, you're required to cover CUSAC in that orientation. The superintendent's evaluation process, HIB, harassment, intimidation and bullying, the Open Public Meetings Act and the Open Public Records Act are all part of the New Board Member Orientation to give you a good sense of what's required in statute. In years two and three of your first term, you're required to take GOV2 and 3. You can take them in either order that you want, whether it's student achievement or school finance, both of which are critical to your understanding of how the school district operates. And then in any year in which you are re-elected or reappointed to the board subsequent to your first term, you must take GOV4. And it really is updates in the law on HIB and other appropriate information that may have changed from the time that you first became a board member. And at this point in time, with the pandemic, as you've seen, you've had to adopt new policies. There are all kinds of executive orders that are coming out rather rapidly from the governor, from the Departments of Health, the State Department of Health, that you all would be updated on in GOV4, for example. The SEC, the School Ethics Commission, has two functions. It issues both advisory opinions as well as hearing ethics complaints. Sometimes, board members believe that they might have a potential conflict around an issue or a proposal. And so you can write to the Ethics Commission on a prospective basis and ask them to weigh in on whether the proposed activity or conduct would constitute a possible violation of the code of ethics. And we recommend that if you know that that's a potential, that that is a good road to go down rather than accidentally overstepping and accidentally violating the code of ethics because you didn't think that it would be. Sometimes advisory opinions are made public. If the School Ethics Commission believes that an advisory opinion that they are issuing has such widespread, meaning statewide, application for board members, they will make that advisory opinion public. They remove the district name. They remove the board members' names. They issue the advisory so that all board members are aware. The Ethics Commission expects that board members will stay current with advisory opinions. And we publish school board notes, which you probably receive electronically. And if you look there, you will always see if there have been any changes or advisory opinions issued. One of the challenges is they need to have six votes to make an advisory opinion public. And there were several years in the last decade when they did not have a full membership to the School Ethics Commission. And so we went several years without any advisory opinions. And then we got, in one year, we got about 15 different advisory opinions issued almost simultaneously. But in the last two years, there have only been two public ethics advisory opinions. I will update you on the one that they issued in 2020 a little later in this presentation. The School Ethics Commission also hears ethics complaints. Anyone can file an ethics complaint against a board member, a member of the public from your community, a member of the public from another community, a parent, a citizen. Anyone can file an ethics complaint against a Board of Education member. So in 2020, just to give you some sense of what 2020 looked like, since we're now in 2021, there was one advisory opinion that was made public. In terms of mandatory training violations, there were 22 of those cases. In eight of those instances, they removed the board members for failure to attend training. In four instances, they suspended board members for 30 days and they reprimanded 10 other board members. In terms of actual violations, there were 24 ethics complaints filed. There were 20 cases that were dismissed for lack of evidence or for other procedural reasons. And then four cases that they actually adjudicated. The School Ethics Commission recommends a penalty. The penalty is finalized and affirmed by the Commissioner of Education. Okay? Here is the only ethics advisory opinion that was issued in 2020. A superintendent's sister-in-law, a lunch aide, was in the district prior to the superintendent being hired by that district. The sister-in-law was selected by principals as a finalist for a secretarial position. And so the superintendent asked the SEC if it was fair to prohibit a qualified employee to move into another role only because her brother-in-law was the superintendent. The SEC used pretty strong language in saying, "No, she can't be moved." Unfortunately, no superintendent is able to promote a relative without giving the public the perception that the action was securing an unwarranted privilege or advantage for a member of his family that if the employment was by another, someone else. And it would leave that opinion that it was the public trust had been violated. So the superintendent was reminded that he must recuse himself from any discussion of his sister-in-law's employment as a lunch aide. So he could not vote on any discussion or participate in any way. So if you have a family member that is employed in the district prior to your becoming a board member, that creates a certain set of conditions that we'll talk about down the road. But no superintendent can appoint a family member or a member of a board member's family to employment in the school district once you are a board member. Now, if you're off the board, that's an entirely different set of circumstances. But as long as you're a board member, you cannot have a family member employed in the school district. If you violate the act and you're found to have a judge to have violated the act, the SEC can recommend to the commissioner that you be reprimanded, you be censured, you be suspended, or you could be removed. A reprimand is simply a rebuke by the commissioner. A censure is more formal. It's formal disapproval. It's a letter that comes into the district that has to be read at a public meeting of the Board of Education and adopted by resolution and posted as part of your minutes. Suspension is exactly what it says it is. It's removal for a specific period of time. Generally, that is used in instances where board members are delinquent in doing their mandatory training. You have an entire board year in which to be trained. So if you go longer than that year, that's when we get into those situations where board members are suspended for, you know, for 30 days, in some instances, for longer. They can remove you from office for the remaining length of your term of service. And they have indeed done that. So the SEC makes a recommendation to the commissioner for a final decision as to which particular discipline is appropriate. And then if you want to appeal that decision, you would have to go to the appellate division of the New Jersey court system to appeal the decision of the Commissioner of Education. Frivolous complaints, there are. I know you might find this hard to believe. But there are times when the citizenry has been known, especially prior to elections, to file frivolous complaints against seated board members in order to perhaps influence the electorate. I'm just going to keep going because if I start thinking about that in real terms, I digress. So if that happens to you or to someone, a board member, the individual who files the frivolous complaint may be fined up to $500. And there was an instance this year where a case was dismissed. The complaint was found to be frivolous, and the individual was fined $100. What's interesting about that particular instance is that the complainant was a superintendent who was fined for filing against a particular board member. So it has been used. And it is a defense for board members that that piece exists within the law. And so you should be glad that that is there. Here are the actual tenants to the code of ethics. You're required to uphold and enforce all laws, rules, regulations of the state of New Jersey, the state Board of Education, and the courts of the New Jersey state courts, as well as all federal laws. So if there's a particular piece that comes down from the state, for example, when the park test came out, there was a number of districts, there were a number of districts who were not in favor of those particular assessments and did not want their administration to administer them. And they wanted to write policy that would provide their district with alternate assessments. They couldn't legally do that because your power is derived from the legislature and you swear to the code of ethics, which means you're required to uphold all of the laws, all of the regulations. So if there's a particular piece to the New Jersey student learning standards that you find objectionable, and there are some board members who do find pieces of that objectionable, it's unfortunate, but it is what is required of every school district, that you have no choice or flexibility in those terms. All right? You're required to make all of your decisions in terms of the educational welfare of all students and meet the individual needs of all students within your school district. You're required to confine your board making and your board action to policymaking, planning and appraisal. You are, by definition, a policymaking body. Your policies provide a roadmap and a set of guidelines and guideposts for your students, your staff, your community, your administrators, and to the board itself through your bylaws. One of the most often violated pieces to the code of ethics or charges of having violated it is this next one, which is not to administer the schools, but together with your fellow board members to see that they are well-run, meaning that you are not involved in the day-to-day operations and administration of the school district. You were there to develop policy, to translate the community's vision for educational excellence into reality through working collaboratively with your administration to set goals that will move your district forward. But you are not to be involved, embedded, meshed in the day-to-day operations of the school district. You must also recognize that authority rests with the Board of Education. That means you operate by majority of the Board of Education once the board has made a decision, that you recognize that that decision has been made and you agree to live with it, and that you make no personal promises to individuals. Oftentimes, there may be members of your community that think that you have the ability to make individual decisions to assist them in getting a problem solved. You do not. What you can do is to provide your community with the information they need to access the system, who they can talk to if they have a problem, if they have a concern, if they need to speak to someone. You can give them that information so that they can get their issues addressed, their concerns, get whatever kind of information they need. But you are not there to solve their problems. Okay? You're required to maintain and uphold confidentiality, particularly in the area of staff and students, provide accurate information and interpret your community's aspirations for their children. And maintaining confidentiality of what goes on in your closed session, which meets the exceptions to the Open Public Meetings Law, is absolutely imperative for the public to have trust and confidence that the board is doing their job appropriately. You have to refuse to surrender your independent judgment to partisan groups or groups of individuals or to use the school for personal gain and enrichment. You're required to vote to appoint the best qualified personnel after consideration of your chief school administrator's recommendation. The board is not permitted to employ anyone in the school district without an affirmative recommendation of your superintendent. You're required to support and protect school personnel and staff in the proper performance of their duties. So if you were accustomed to sitting on the sidelines of the soccer game and complaining about staff, you are no longer able to do that as a Board of Education member. You are held to a higher standard by the code of ethics. And if you have a concern regarding a particular staff member or something that occurs in the district, the appropriate response that you have is to notify your superintendent, and your administration will address it. Because again, the last one is that you have to refer all complaints to the chief administrative officer and only act after the failure of an administrative solution. If board members involve themselves in issues below and fail to do this and get involved when a parent calls and wants a solution to something, if it were to get to the board level, you would have to recuse yourself and you would be unable to participate. Plus, you will have failed to abide by the code of ethics. Because again, you are the what people. You are the group that has the vision for what the district needs to look like. How that happens and making that happen is the responsibility of your professional educators. That's where their expertise lies, and it's up to them to make those things happen. Okay? So in terms of, are there any questions about any one of those pieces to the code of ethics that any of you have? I would be happy to answer questions as we go through if you have them, and I can address them. No? Okay. We will move along. In 2020, commissioners' decisions. A board member was employed as a teacher in another school district from where she sat on the Board of Education, and she failed to disclose income she received as president of the district's education association. In some larger school districts, presidents of the education associations do, in some instances, receive a stipend and/or reduce teaching responsibilities. And in this instance, her failure to disclose that led to a censure from the School Ethics Commission. So you want to make sure, as you're filling that out, that you are thorough and complete. A teacher or parent sent an email to the full board about the superintendent's handling of an incident. A board member intending to email the board used reply "all" so that the parent and teacher also received the email that included details of the board's executive session. Okay? That violated confidentiality. It had the potential to violate the Open Publics Meeting Act, and the individual was reprimanded. So just a word or two about the use of social media. Board members should never discuss district business via email. Particularly, you should absolutely categorically never discuss staff or discuss students on an email. Ever. Okay? This was an accidental piece. The person replied "all." I'm sure it was not their intent. But the outcome seriously undermined the board's confidentiality in a student and teacher matter that could be both publicly embarrassing and expose the board to liability from both the parents and the staff member. So you need to be very careful with your utilization of social media and email. I know that they are very helpful for getting information out. But there is a darker side that can be happened if you're not particularly thoughtful about it.
Gwen, hi. It's Cindy Nurse. I have a question. When are the financial disclosure statements sent out?
They generally get notification via your district email, and it's generally in the March-April timeframe, is my recollection. So they have been sent out. They may be slightly delayed here just because of and the Department of Education, which the SEC falls under. It may be a little bit behind. I don't know that for a fact, but my recollection is that it is somewhere in March-April timeframe because they pick up the less than 12 school districts that have elections in April as well as those boards that are appointed because their terms run May to May. As if you're running November to January. Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome. A board member posted on a blog information that contained attacks in the qualification, salary and general employment of a tenured teacher in the district. They suspended the board member for six months. The board member argued that his rights as a private citizen and that he had put through required disclaimer that he was speaking as himself and not on behalf of the board. However, his status as a board member was referenced several times in the blog, so it was not convincing that he was speaking as a private citizen. Board members can, if they so choose, post something as a private citizen as long as they indicate that they are a member of the Hillsborough Board of Education, that they are not speaking on behalf of the Hillsborough Board of Education, that the information that they are conveying is accurate and truthful to the best of their knowledge, and that they are expressing their opinions solely. Now, just because you can doesn't mean that you should. Those are the guidelines that go all the way back to when people used to write editorials about budgets, when budgets had to be passed by the citizenry prior to the change in the election date and the elimination of the vote on a budget that was at 2% cap or under. And so the SEC and the courts have held those same requirements for posting something on social media. But again, just because you can doesn't mean that you should. But it is open to you. This gentleman claimed that that's what he was doing, that he had the disclaimer, that he was speaking for himself. He wasn't speaking for the board. But once you become a board member, your public knows that you were a board member. And again, you are held to a higher standard. Oftentimes, I am asked about the fact that you have free speech. And yes, you do. But it is limited by the fact that you have now become a public official and that speech is limited by the guidelines provided by the SEC and the law. And so you have to be very mindful of those limitations around that right to free speech. It is not an absolute. I liken it to the scarlet letter. I like to think of it as a big B right on your forehead that says "board member." And your public knows who you are, and you need to be careful in that regard. The commissioner revoked a send-receive relationship with an out-of-state district, identifying an in-state district to receive the district's students. This particular district had for years sent their students out of state for their high school. But it was becoming increasingly expensive between the busing and the tuition. The board president fully participated in the actions that resulted in the passing of the board's resolution to continue the out-of-state relationship that the commissioner had ordered severed because the president's child was impacted by the decision. because the president's child was impacted by the decision to move from the out-of-state district to the in-state district. Okay? The board member, the penalty was a censure. The member was off the board. She did not run for reelection. And the SEC commented that had they been able to, they would have recommended removal from the board. Seeing it as particularly egregious because the commissioner had ordered the severance of that relationship for financial purposes. And the board blatantly disregarded it. Okay? And it was a clear and palpable conflict of interest, which is pretty strong language for the School Ethics Commission. If you ever sit and read some of their decisions, some are more strongly worded than others. And you can sort of glean from the language included in these decisions just how upset they are with board member behavior and that one was one where they were. A board member attended an all-expense-paid conference offered by a potential vendor to the district that the member introduced to the district based on a pre-existing relationship that the board member had with the vendor. He was suspended for six months. It was the securing of an advantage, an out-of-state trip that was a benefit that was not offered to everyone. It was also interfering with the day-to-day operations of the district because board members really should not be interacting with vendors on a regular basis where you would be offered an out-of-state trip. Okay? The commissioner suspended the board member for six months. The member is appealing. It's still under adjudication. But I think the commissioner's decision to suspend for six months will be upheld. At least that's my professional opinion on how they will address that. Okay? In terms of conflict of interest, again, this is another area that's in 18A 12-24. You must recuse yourself if there is a benefit that would accrue to you as a school board member or your immediate family due to any kind of business interest. If you tried to use your position to secure unwarranted privileges, advantages, or employment. If there was any financial involvement and gain for you as a board member. If you accepted a gift or a favor that was offered with the intent to influence your vote. If you have a personal involvement, again, that creates a benefit that is greater than a benefit that would accrue to any citizen or any other board member. So for example, I've had board members ask me, we have to approve field trips. I have a fourth grader. There's a fourth grade field trip on the agenda. Can I vote on that? Or does that create a benefit to my child? The answer is, it doesn't create a benefit for your child that is greater than the benefit that every fourth grader who's going on that trip receives. And so it is not a conflict for you to vote on something because the benefit for your child is no greater than what every other child in the district is receiving. Okay? Any kind of personal involvement that you have that would create a benefit, service or employment that would prejudice your independent judgment. No discussion of any of these issues if you're involved, no vote. And again, SEC here defines your immediate family as being your spouse or for a dependent child residing in your home. Okay? Who qualifies as a relative for other kinds of issues? The accountability regulations that were put into place in 6A 23A-1.2, which were created in 2008 and they renewed several times. We just, they were just readopted in 2016-17. Every professional association in the state level provided comments. ASBO, the Business Administrators, NJASA, the Superintendent's Association, New Jersey School Boards Association, NJEA, the Teachers Association, the LEAG Group, which are Leaders in Educational Excellence, which is the collective of all those educational groups, each individually and collaboratively, excuse me, commented on the accountability regulations. But they expanded the definition to include a much broader list of relatives that they are using in a number of ethics decisions, even though the Ethics Act does not include this broader definition. And this broader definition is found in the accountability regs, which is why I'm taking time to explain to you why it's important. So this is much broader because it includes spouse, civil union, or domestic partner, stepparents and your parents, your children, your stepchildren, your son and daughters-in-laws, grandparents, grandchildren, siblings, stepbrothers, stepsisters, half-brothers, half-sisters, aunts, uncles, nieces, nephews, and a partridge in a pear tree. It refers to almost anyone that you are related to. Okay? Whether it's by blood, because when I sat on my board, obviously, my husband didn't sit on the board. So my relatives were only defined as those related to me by blood. But now it's by blood, marriage, or adoption. So it includes not just you, but your significant other's family, whether it's your spouse or your civil union or whoever your partner is, if you have one. And so you need to keep that in mind as we talk through some of these pieces around personnel. Board members may not hire a relative of another board member or a relative of the chief school administrator. And indeed, the chief school administrator may not recommend to the board any relative of a board member or any relative of their own family. Okay? If you have a relative who already is employed in your district when you become a board member, then the board member may not take part in employment matters concerning the superintendent or supervisors in the chain of command between the relative and the chief school administrator. You can't negotiate on the contract. You can't take part in anything having to do with the superintendent's employment. Or if your relative, let's say, for example, what I mean by the chain of command, if your relative, let's say, is a teacher, then you can't be involved in the discussion of the principal of the building in which your family member is employed. Okay? A board member may not take part in the search, selection, or vote to hire a new superintendent and post-hire evaluations and contract discussions are off the table. I have some boards where this is an issue where we have a lot of conflicted board members and I have other districts where no one has a family member employed in the district and none of this is a conflict. Okay? So you just need to think about that. So if your district has an opening for a guidance counselor and you believe it would be a perfect job for your nephew who only lives two towns away, can the district hire him? No, he's a member of your family. He can't be employed. Okay? The board is going to discuss the superintendent's performance evaluation. Your spouse is an aide in the district. Can you participate in that discussion? No, you cannot participate. It doesn't matter what job the person holds in the school, whether they're an aide, whether they're a bus driver, if you do your own busing as a district, if they're a teacher, if they're a principal, a vice principal, supervisor, or director, in any capacity, you are conflicted out. In terms of bargaining and negotiating, whether it's for the Teachers Association or if you have an administrative bargaining unit or any bargaining unit. If the relationship to the board members, your spouse, your dependent child, your child who's not a dependent, meaning they're not living with you, you're not supplying them with income, or a relative, if they are a current member of the same statewide or similar association, NJEA or AFT, American Federation of Teachers. We have some districts that are AFT. We also have some districts that are AFL-CIO, believe it or not, that they have units that are AFL-CIO that are employed in the district. You may not participate in the negotiations of a new contract for any of the bargaining units and you may not vote on the contract. You have to completely recuse yourself. If it's yourself, your spouse, or your dependent child and they work, again, out of your district in another school district. They work in Montgomery or they work in Pensacola. They work anywhere in another school district. You may not participate in negotiations, but you may indeed vote on the contract once the memorandum of agreement has been made and all of the salary guides and total costs to the district have been determined. Then you may indeed vote on that contract. Okay? Absent any other conflict, and I'll tell you what that other conflict is in a minute. If you have a child who's not a dependent, meaning an adult child, or a relative with that broader definition of relative under nepotism, right? Stepchildren, in-laws, nephews, and they work in a school district. Yes, you may participate in negotiations and yes, you may vote on the contract. Again, after all salary guides are determined and the total compensation of the package has been figured out and attained, you may vote on the contract. Absent another conflict means, if, absent another conflict, if your family member, yourself, your spouse, or your dependent child has heightened union activity, then you would be precluded. That would constitute another conflict and you couldn't vote on the contract. So by heightened union activity, if they were a building rep in the district where they're working, if they were an officer in the union in the district in which they are working, or if they were actually sitting on the negotiations team of the district in which they're working, that would be considered heightened union activity as opposed to simply being a member of the association or union. Okay? So if you have questions on who can and cannot participate with, like everything else in the district, your board attorney is the final arbiter of those pieces, not me. Okay? I'm just laying out the general landscape. But if you think that you have a potential conflict, you depend on your board attorney to help you make those decisions. They are the arbiter. I'm not an attorney. I've never played one on TV. But we can help you to at least understand what the general guidelines are. And they do and they have changed. This looks different than it looked when I was a Board of Education member. Okay? It absolutely looks differently than it did. The definition of relative that was expanded didn't exist when I was a board member. It was your spouse or your dependent children and that was considered the conflict, not for all those other relatives. Okay? If you have so many members of your board who are conflicted that you can't vote on a requirement on adopting a contract, hiring a superintendent, you could indeed invoke the doctrine of necessity, which was created by A19-17. But that is only where you require a supermajority of the board to vote on something. The SEC has held that you really only need one member for doing negotiations because the committee member, you know, can get assistance from the superintendent, can get assistance from the business administrator. You can hire a professional negotiator. They've actually said the same thing for search. I was in a district doing a search where there were only three board members who were not conflicted. The majority of the board was conflicted. And so they asked for an advisory opinion as to whether they could invoke the doctrine of necessity so that everyone could participate. And the SEC said, nope, three people is just fine. Now, that's pretty risky for hiring a superintendent. Turned my hair a little gray, but we did get through it. So this is only for those instances where you need to approve a contract and you need a supermajority of the board in order to do it. But you need to know there is a remedy if that's the circumstance in your district, which is very unusual. This is another new piece that didn't exist when I was a Board of Education member. But I've been doing this work. This is my 18th year, so it's been a while. The SEC has put some limits around how board members volunteer in school districts. You're not banned from volunteering in school districts. And it has been my experience that in many instances, board members are some of the most active volunteers in school districts. And so generally, you can volunteer for activities that support your own children, including, because there's a specific ethics decision around this, holding an officer position in your PTA or your homeschool association or your PTO, whatever, however you designate your parent-teacher organizations. However, there are certain activities that you need to refrain from based on the amount of interaction you would be having with students and staff, the degree to which the school board member has any authority to give or receive directions to or from students and/or staff. And certainly, you must avoid handling any kind of district finances whatsoever. And I will give you this example. When my children were in elementary school, we used to run a school store one day a week, you know, and the kids would come in and buy pencils and erasers and notebooks. And it was a minimal fundraiser for the PTO, but it was essentially for the kids and it was for the early elementary grade levels and they loved it. And we were collecting their nickels and dimes, literally in quarters. Okay? I handled the money because I used to come in and volunteer and help run the school store. You would not be able to do that now. You absolutely would not be able to do that now. So if you plan to volunteer in the schools, you should notify your superintendent ahead of time of your planned in-school activity in advance. We know, for example, that one-time, one-shot instances are no problem. Coming in to do Read Across America on Dr. Seuss Day or the Hundredth Day is absolutely fine. And chaperoning a field trip, believe it or not, the SEC held they had no problem with that. So you just need to know, and these are the questions that we believe you should ask yourself with the response you should have before you volunteer. Will I be giving directions or orders to students or staff? The answer should be no in your volunteer activity. Will I take orders from staff under the circumstances? And the answer should be no. Okay? Will I be in the school often? And again, the answer should be no. Will it seem to visitors that I work in the school, that I'm enmeshed in the school building? And the answer should be no. Will I be handling the district's money at all? And the answer should be no. Will I lead a regular or recurring school district club or coach for activity or sport? The answer is no, you may not. Okay? Now, that does not preclude you from coaching or volunteering for Park and Recs, the Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, the Bluebirds, the Audubon Society, the Town Library, the Pop Warner, if you have Hillsborough Soccer Association, any of those organizations that are separate and apart from the school district, you can have at it for as much as you want. The Rec Commission, any of those kinds of things. If they have their own bylaws and their own bank accounts, you can be involved as you want, but not in the district. Okay?
Gwen?
Yes?
I'm assuming that volunteering is different than if a teacher were to invite all the parents in for a performance readings. That would be different and not need to be cleared?
Correct. I would encourage all board members to attend as many public events that the school holds as possible. Choral concerts, science fairs, anything that is a public, open football games, basketball games, wrestling matches, when we get back to normal, right? We're not in a normal circumstance now, but any of those kinds of activities, both the parents and the kids really do like to see Board of Education members. And I would encourage you to attend as many of those as both your personal and professional commitments will permit you to do. It is a good thing to do for the district to be present. Anything that you are invited to, you are permitted to attend. If you're invited to the National Honor Society induction and the full board is invited, you certainly may attend those kinds of activities as well because you've invited as a special guest. You certainly are willing to do that and you can do that. The Halloween, if you do a Halloween parade. The Halloween, if you do a Halloween parade and it's open to all the public, anything like that is perfectly fine. And that is not considered volunteerism. Okay? That's considered public attendance at a public event, which you can absolutely do, and I would encourage you to do that. This is different too, um, than when I was there. Um, the board member's role in personnel is a very limited and prescribed one. Boards, members, involvement in interviews for a position other than superintendents, they make this clear in their advisory, is not encouraged. But in narrow circumstances, subject to the approval of the superintendent and the guidelines established in A four twelve, you are permitted to do so for high-level administrative positions only. Okay? And they are only observations and, and assessments and only with the recommendation of your superintendent. Okay? So in most instances, board members are not ever, um, involved in the interview process with the exception sometimes of either a principal, but mostly directors, supervisors, or your business administrator. But typically not, and you may only have two people. And then it's really for the purpose of observation and only with your superintendent's recommendation. On the flip side, they left in place A fifteen-ten, which says you can't participate in exit interviews. So you can see that A thirty-one-fifteen and A four oh-four-twelve came from a different group on the Ethics Commission than the people who sat on the board when they decided Advisory fifteen-dash-ten. Because if you can sit in and on an interview, why couldn't you sit in and observe, just logic would say, right? On an exit interview? And the answer is you can't because that's the decision. And to be perfectly honest with you, both A thirty-one-fifteen and A oh-four-twelve stunned most of the staff and our legal staff, um, at New Jersey School Boards because it does come very close to, if not cross the line into administering the school district. Um, and so it is not encouraged, which is why they led with that language because they don't really want board members doing that. But you need to know that that exists. Okay? We strongly recommend that you develop a list of members and administrators who have a conflict and review it regularly because people's circumstances change. If you don't have anyone with conflicts, that's wonderful. If you do, you just need to make sure that if it changes or shifts, that you're aware of it and make sure that you behave appropriately within those circumstances. Again, always consult with your board attorney on ethics issue, um, and to identify conflicted members and or administrators. Um, again, continue to check school board notes because that's where we publish updates when there are ethics decisions that you need to be aware of. Um, and to make that, um, because the expectation by the S E C is that if they've made a public opinion public, they expect you to abide by that. So if you violate, uh, an ethics advisory opinion, they're not very sympathetic to, oh, gosh, I didn't know. They have an expectation that you're going to stay up to date on those things. And that's why every year you are recommended to do the kind of annual ethics training just to stay up to date on the changes that may have occurred. So questions that you may have on ethics that I can answer for you.
Hi, Gwen, Chris Paulsper here.
Hi, Chris.
Question on, like question on the volunteering.
Yes.
How, how would that apply in terms of volunteering in a different district? Is there any reason to see any restriction on volunteering in other districts?
No.
Thank you. I'm not thinking specifically in terms of, uh, employment, your employer being involved in a local school district, local to the office, not local to Hillsborough in this case, uh, and being involved in educational programs and such, uh, as volunteers in that local district.
You certainly could do that. And I certainly do not think that it is a conflict. For example, if you run in your, for example, a, um, not a job fair, but you operate, um, you offer an opportunity for students to talk about various, like a career day. So if you're asked to come in and speak about your professional career, right? You certainly could do that. It's a one-time event, even in Hillsborough. So if, in another district, to answer your question, Chris, is perfectly acceptable. You don't have to, you have no limitations. But, you know, for board members, if you're asked to come in and speak at the high school, for example, to future business leaders, um, if, if you have an F B L A club, um, Future Business Leaders of America, or if you, you know, in some of my districts, if you had a Future Farmers of America club, um, and you were a farmer and they asked you to come in and talk about what does that work look like? How do you work, et cetera? You could do that as long as you informed your superintendent ahead of time. It's a one-time event. They've invited you in. You certainly can go do that. You're not enmeshing yourself in the building. You're not promoting a product. You're talking about what you do professionally and that's okay.
Right. Would that include even a continuing program in the outside district? Where it was not just a one-time, like a weekly?
Absolutely. You can do it regularly as you would like. Because it's not your district. You're just a volunteer citizen helping out a school district. You're not a Board of Education member in that community. This applies only to board members in your particular community. So.
Good time. Mrs. Nurse, Mr. Marini or Mr. Oliver? And Mrs. Maroon, do you have any questions? No? Okay. And I'm just gonna check Mrs. Maroon, if you have any questions? Looks like a no. Okay. Um, so Mrs. Thornton, I would just take a moment now to open the, um, floor to public comments. I believe Mrs. Angeliana or Dr. Antonis, did we receive any public comment by email?
We did not.
Okay. And there are no attendees today in person.
There are, there are two at the moment.
Oh, okay.
And there are no questions.
Okay. So, um, so I guess I open and then I close.
Yes.
Okay. So thank you very much to the public who is participating. And then I will turn it back over to you, Mrs. Thornton, to continue with the board goal development portion. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Um, board goals are goals, um, probably easier to start here. In school district, there are multiplicity of different types of goals. There are district goals that refer to the overall operation and functioning of the district, program, instruction, curriculum, the staff, professional development, your facilities, your finance. Um, those are collaboratively set between the board and the administration. Um, they move the district forward, but the superintendent is responsible for the completion of those boards' goals. The boards, excuse me, district goals. The board supplies the necessary resource through the budget for their attainment so that you can hire the appropriate staff, you can make the appropriate, um, changes to your facilities. You can provide the professional development to your staff. Those are the district goals. Board goals are goals that are set to improve your processes and procedures. They are owned by the Board of Education and they're evaluated in conjunction with the board's self-evaluation that are recommended to complete annually as a best practice. It's not required to do a board self-evaluation by statute. For a while, it was in New Jersey CUSAC, but then they revised CUSAC and they took it out, much to our disappointment because we do believe that a self-evaluation for a board is a best practice. You hold the superintendent accountable for their performance and then the board holds themselves accountable for their performance. How well have we done in supporting, um, the role of the administration in moving the district forward? C S As also have typically personal goals that are derived from, um, their annual leadership skills evaluation. Um, and additionally, some superintendents have merit goals. But I want to talk tonight a little bit about board goals because you're a brand-new board, you've just reorganized, elected new leaders. Um, and having board goals is something that can help you to be more effective and efficient as a board in the way that you operate and how you function. Um, and they really do lead, should lead to improved governance practices. Um, it demonstrates your commitment as a board to continuous improvement, which is something, um, that we hold typically as an expectation for our staff as well as our students, that they will continually improve. Um, so you're not just talking the talk, but you're walking the walk. They lead hopefully to more effective communication among and between board members, but also with your community at large, um, which I think is something that is always a challenge for boards of education. Um, we've been good for years and years and more years at putting out information. We have been less adroit and adept at having those two-way conversations and having those dialogues that are critical for success. Um, but that being said, Board of Education meetings are really not meant to be a dialogue. And they are not really the appropriate place to have that two-way conversation. Board meetings are meant as meetings of the board in public that allows the public to observe you conducting the business of the district and to provide comment on that operation of the business. Um, but they are not designed as a, a dialogue. They provide accountability for the board, that you're holding yourselves accountable for your performance. And, and they do lead to a more cohesive team. And we know that through research, um, the Iowa Project and other research that has been done on boards of education, that the districts with the highest level of student performance are boards and superintendents that collaboratively learn together and work together. Um, and so having board goals to improve, um, all of those pieces generally lead to higher levels of student achievement. Okay? And of course, here's your mission statement. And that is that you are committed to providing superior education so that all students will leave us, lead us successfully and responsibly into the future, which is certainly something we are all looking forward to. Um, a next generation of leaders that will move us forward in a responsible way. So as you're thinking about as a board, you know, what kinds of professional development would improve what you do in your governing skills? Um, what professional development does your board self-evaluation indicate? Now, the board this year, and I understand because of the transition that took place between boards with the pandemic, um, that the self-evaluation was not completed. Um, the self-evaluation was not finished. Um, but it's off, it's often, and you've been pretty good as a board about doing that. Um, and I would suggest that that carry on. So, um, what kind of professional development do you need as a board that will support your district goals? And then, you know, how do we as a board support your culture of caring and thriving learning ecosystem regardless of where we are today? Because we're not always going to be in this current circumstance that we are in, where you have to be remote and kids are in hybrid and they're learning remotely and we're dealing with all of the challenges, um, of educating children in a, in a COVID world. Um, it's not always going to be that way. And I'm hopeful and optimistic, guardedly optimistic, um, that by fall of next year, we should be able to return to a new normal. Um, I'm not sure quite what that will look like, but I don't think it'll look like where we are today. Um, so, you know, as you think about a starting point, um, as a board, you might want to think about your particular areas of responsibility that are appropriate for board members, policy development and or revisions. How do you pursue oversight and monitoring? Um, how do you ensure comprehensive curriculum and instruction? And then in the area of communications, because, you know, you have a dual role there. You serve as both ambassadors to the community, um, but also as conduits, um, from the community to translate their hopes and aspirations for their children into reality. So you have both your internal communications among the between-board members to think about, but also those that are external with your stakeholders at large, with your community members, with your parents, your senior citizens, the municipality, um, that anyone that is involved, um, within the school community. And then consider, you know, what are your strengths and your most recent achievements? Clearly passing the referendum, um, settling a contract, um, getting the school up and running, um, in a COVID, uh, world is certainly something. Um, that all of those are very, um, huge tasks that, that demanded a lot of both, um, your administrative team, your, your teachers, your Board of Education, um, and, and demonstrate, you know, a level of support from your community. Um, but thinking about what you do particularly well, um, and then what you might want to focus on that would enhance your performance as a Board of Education. Um, and so we do recommend that boards, um, have goals for themselves that are around their processes and procedures. And so, um, you know, here are some examples of some board goals that you, just to give you some idea. Um, I had a board that wanted to commit to reducing distractions and increasing the efficiency of their discussions in order to reduce the length of their meetings because they were running particularly long. Um, and people were becoming very frustrated, board members were becoming frustrated. I had a board that wanted to look at their practices and investigate ways to increase community, um, committee and board effectiveness. So they wanted to look at the three, three master committee system as a way of reducing committee meetings and, and being more efficient. Um, they wanted to investigate becoming a certified board through the academy program. Um, and oftentimes boards want a communication goal, um, around how can we more effectively communicate with our stakeholders? I think that's an evergreen goal. I don't think you can ever over-communicate. I think that's something, you know, that, that happens year over year, that we have to keep, continue to work at that. Um, and so because I've worked with Hillsborough for a while, um, and I looked at the past couple of years' worth of self-evals, um, I, I came up with some suggested board goals that you all might want to consider. Um, not to be overstepping my role, but just to perhaps give you some assistance in thinking about some things that I have observed over time. Um, completing the superintendent's evaluation within the statutorily required timeline. I know that last year was an exceptional year because of, um, the pandemic, but it is still your responsibility. Um, failure to complete it in the statutorily required timeline um, means you lose thirteen points on your CUSAC governance D P R. And so it becomes imperative. It is also a mark of a professional board that values their administration to, to want to have it done in a timely way to provide feedback. It's a communications tool, um, and it assists your superintendent um, in ensuring, um, the, the board and the superintendent stay on the same page. So I think it's a mark of respect, um, for your one employee because at the end of the day, the Board of Education in every school district has one employee, and that's the superintendent. The board holds the superintendent accountable for their performance and the superintendent holds all other staff through her chain of, or his chain of command with the responsibility for evaluating all other staff. Okay? Um, completing the board's self-evaluation after completion of the superintendent's evaluation. Once you have held the superintendent accountable for his or her performance, you hold yourselves accountable for your performance. How have we done? How effective have we been in supporting the district and the administration in moving the district forward? I, I think that that's always an important piece. Um, I, I know that policy is always and often a concern. Um, we have, as part of your dues, you can submit your policy manual to N J S B A for a wellness check. And we will go over your entire policy manual. Um, it's part of your dues and let you know what perhaps needs revision or updating. And then once you've gotten that back, um, to, to look at those policies to ensure that they reflect your current practices as a board, particularly in the area of your bylaws, and then ensure equitable access for all students to the full curriculum and co-curricular program. So to reduce any kind of disparate outcomes from inequitable, um, practices that may have been in place for years that people have just not looked at. Um, and so that is something that is particularly appropriate because you are a policymaking body. Um, and I thought that might be something that would help you as a new board to sort of hone in on where are those areas that we really need to look at as a board in terms of our policy that needs updated and revised. And there may be none. I mean, I don't know. Um, but I thought that that might be something that would be helpful. And then lastly, to provide support and resources through your budgeting, um, to support student achievement and address the ongoing challenges of the pandemic. student achievement and address the ongoing challenges of the pandemic, because we are going to have ongoing costs associated with a pandemic, whether you're talking about busing, PPE, cleaning, you know, all of the materials and equipment to keep all of that going. And so I think that those are some of my thoughts around what your board might benefit most from in terms of establishing as goals.
Gwen, the last one, is it just pretty much more general in terms of that's what you're recommending for all boards because of the situation we are in, or is that specific to Hillsborough?
No, that is a pretty general one, recommending to all boards because of the pandemic and because of COVID. And because of the downturn, I mean, Hillsborough specifically, you lost a lot of state aid with under-suffer, that caused the reduction in staff that you experienced. But the state revenues are down. Sales tax revenue is down, income tax revenue is down, gambling revenue is down, pick any kind of revenue that the state generates, it's down. So it's going to be a particularly challenging budget year, I believe, for most boards of education. I don't think I'm overstating that. And so it's important to make sure that you are providing the resources that will support improving and continuing to support student achievement, as well as provide for those challenges of the pandemic. We may get some relief from the Fed after the 20th. Hopefully, there'll be more federal stimulus money available, but that's an unknown at this point in time. And so this is just sort of a general goal. Oftentimes, the measurability of these things find expression in the action plans to a district goal. If some of you are thinking about SMART goals, specific, measurable, attainable, relevant, and time-bound, oftentimes those pieces to a board goal or even a district goal find expression in the action plan itself rather than in the writing of the goal. Thoughts?
Gwen, this is Jane Stats.
Hi, Jane.
Are you recommending a certain number of goals, or like just one or two?
However many the board wants to tackle. I don't, I think you should not take on more than you can handle. I want yourself up to not be successful. Typically, do not recommend more than three or four district goals. I would never recommend more than three or four board goals in a given year. Submitting your policy manual for a wellness check really doesn't require a lot of effort on behalf of the board in terms of work. It's sort of a gimme kind of goal, but you will at least get back and be able to identify then clearly if there's anything that stands out that's missing and/or that has not been revised in recent memory. So let me give you an example. A board member sent me a goal that was a dress code, which is an optional policy. It's not a mandated policy at the state or the federal level, but it was a district policy on dress code, and it was written in 2010. It's a decade old. So it was not written with equity in mind, and it was not written with gender equity in mind, it was not written with racial or cultural awareness or sensitivity in mind, primarily because it targeted girls more than anything else and what they could and could not wear. Okay? That was a policy that a board member just happened to be flipping through the policy manual and came across and said, whoa, this is not what we do. It doesn't reflect our current practice. We need to revise this policy. So that's what a wellness check would do for you. And again, it doesn't matter to me if you do it or not. It's part of your dues, you can, you can't, it doesn't. NJSPA doesn't gain anything from that particular piece. It's just a service that we offer. Well, the board can think about this and discuss it and make a determination later on if you'd like as to which, if any, of these goals or any other goals that you can think of that you would like to focus on. But you only have between now and, you know, this would, this goal, because you're setting it now, would run through the end of the board year rather than the end of the school year. Does that make any sense? So it would be this board year from January until January of 2022.
Gwen, do you recommend that we discuss, like, how do you recommend that we move forward with some discussion of board goals? Is that something that we would do in public session? I would think we start in committee first.
You could start in committee first, but it is a public discussion. You know, discussion of goals and adoption of goals is a public, open public session item. It is not a close session. It is not an exception to the open public meetings law.
Okay. So do you have any further slides or information for tonight?
Only this, which would be that once you develop a goal, you would develop an action plan that would outline who's involved, what resources you need, what the timelines look like, and then what are the indicators of success? How will you know as a board that you have achieved your goal? How will you be able to demonstrate to the public and to your community that you have worked on a particular piece? And I can send you a blank. Okay? The board would develop the action plan for the board goals, and then you would be, as a board, responsible. So if you have a policy committee, they would be working on the policy. And the superintendent's evaluation and statutorily required timeline would be the responsibility of every board member, but clearly as officers to make sure that, you know, it got out in time and sort of like herding cats to get people to finish, but that would be that responsibility. And then you can update the public periodically on your progress toward your district goals. Again, you know, having those goals as your public, this is what we're working on, and here's what we've done to date. So having, you know, progress reports on that. You know, there's not one giant step that's going to do it all. It's a lot of little steps to success, but, you know, you've begun to make those, and that's a good thing. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that any of you have.
I'll open it up to the board members if, so Gwen, would you recommend that perhaps that now would be a good time to maybe just throw out some ideas from board members to hear what they're thinking, or what is your recommendation?
I would do that. That's really what I was.
Okay, sounds good. So then I will open it up for board members to just kind of maybe a little bit of sharing what's on their minds.
Lisa has her hand.
Oh, oh, Mrs. Maroon? Mrs. Maroon, please.
A good place to start would just be submitting our policy manual. I mean, I can't see how it would hurt us, and I think Gwen mentioned the equity, and I love to make sure that our policies are adhering to equity for all of our students and staff.
That sounds really good, Mrs. Maroon. Do you have any other ideas? I like that one with the review of the new policy manual. I'm sorry, I can't find you on my screen, so I can't see if you're, oh, there you are. Okay, so you're good, Mrs. Maroon? That's good, okay, excellent. Mrs. Nurse?
I agree with Ms. Maroon on looking through the policies, especially with three new board members. That would be very helpful to make sure that they're fresh. But one thing that I feel is really important that is not a suggestion right now is improving effective communication amongst the stakeholders. Some groups need, I think, more than others at this point, specifically talking about improving relationships with the HEA and staff members and working jointly, I think is a goal that we should have, especially, you know, with everything going on in the past few years.
Mr. Marini, please.
Yeah, and I would second that previous comment and supplement it with having some sort of satisfaction metrics, whether it be through some sort of Survey Monkey responses from the community, responses on effectiveness of communication, and looking for some sort of measurable increase in response from the community and from the HEA as well, you know, basically our stakeholders. On top of that, I would also, and this may be of value with three new board members, is a review of the budget, especially mentioning that funds are going to be tight this year, reviewing that and looking for potential monetary savings within the budget and maybe making some suggested improvements there as we go into this year.
Okay. A couple of comments, I think those are all valuable. They are not necessarily the par view of the board as board goals. So, you know, the budget development is a function of a board committee in collaboration with your administration. And so just in tackling that, it's the board's role to set budget parameters. Can we go to 2%? What happens if we go to 1.5%? What if we have bank cap that we can use? But, and certainly reviewing the budget is something that's required by law that the board do, and holding a public hearing around the budget is required of the board of education. But the writing of the budget itself is not the par view of the board. The board needs to provide appropriate parameters for the budget to administration, and the administration needs to provide to the board their priorities, their identification of priorities, to have a discussion with the board around that so that it reflects the collaborative will of the board and the administration. Okay? In terms of surveying the HEA and community stakeholders, if that's something that needs to happen, that needs to happen through the administration, not through the board of education. Okay? You serve as ambassadors. You can be involved in working on dialogue with your community members, but it's, there are very specific guidelines around what's appropriate for board members and what's not. You have one employee, and that is the superintendent. And so if you have concerns about the relationships with various bargaining units or with community members, let's say like the municipality or senior citizens or a particular group, certainly that can be shared with your administration, but they are the ones that would be responsible for the how, for making that happen, not the board of education. Okay? That's not a board goal. That's not around your processes and procedures. That's around district. Okay? How the district functions, the finances of the district. The communication is sort of a shared overlap because you are ambassadors for your school district, and you do want to have those dialogues with community members, but certainly with staff, that's a whole course of a different color, and that's not something that is appropriate for board members. Board members should not be interacting and discussing district business with staff members other than the superintendent. And if there are staff that are interacting and providing information and having ex parte conversations with board of education members, that needs to be communicated and told to your superintendent. Staff knows that that's not appropriate. They have a chain of command to follow. They have a process by which to have their voices heard, whether it's through the association's leadership meeting with the superintendent, whether it's through the grievance process, but there is a process in place for that to take place, and it is not directly through interaction with the board of education.
Mrs. Nurse?
Gwen, I think, you know, I think we might be at a crossroads in terms of what you just said and thinking, while at least I joined the board in part was watching relationships deteriorate within this district and wanting to help turn that around and make that more positive. And if the concern, or at least the perception of staff, is that there is a deterioration between them and the board, what recommendations do you have? Because I think I saw this, and I'm not sure, you know, I've talked to a couple of the board members, as a collaboration between administrators, the board, and the HEA in re-establishing positive relationships. So what opportunities or options are there in order to develop positive relationships between these, particularly these three stakeholders?
I think it has to do with how staff is treated, how they're respected, how they're spoken to at board meetings and at appropriate interactions that include your administration. But again, you know, it is not the role of the board to be interacting with staff beyond the superintendent around district business unless you're negotiating. Now, that's not to say that if you have a child in the district, you can't talk to your child's teacher. I'm not suggesting that. That's perfectly appropriate, right? You are always your child's first and best advocate, but as a board member, there is not. You know, you can join forces to do fundraising for needy children. I mean, there are a number of those kinds of activities that foster goodwill and collaboration between the association and the board, but there is not really an appropriate role for a board member in interacting with staff beyond the board meeting and/or as parent of a child in the district.
And Gwen, this is Paul. So let's say we exclude the HEA from this discussion. We talk about better relations between the board and the community at large.
Right?
Does that make that an easier discussion?
Sure. It does make it an easier discussion because there aren't the limitations around the staff. So with your community, you know, if you want a climate and culture survey done, which is what I think you were suggesting, that is, that would go out through the school district, and the board would provide guidance and direction to your administration to survey, to do a climate and culture survey of the school district. And then those results would come back to the board and be reported on and discussed by the administration. So whether, you know, what is identified is we need to provide more social, emotional learning opportunities, whether we need to provide more project-based learning, whether it's, you know, there's inadequate internet connection for kids learning remotely, I mean, whatever is indicated by that survey then becomes a focus for the board and the administration to work on collaboratively in improving and changing. So that is dramatically different. You know, there are districts where superintendents and boards of education will, around a particular topic, say for example, or around a particular issue, hold what I would call a town hall. Some superintendents do, you know, coffee with the superintendent, do a brown bag lunch, invite public members to come in. A little difficult to do, I get that during a pandemic, but, you know, I had a superintendent every, once a month, every Saturday, he would go to the cafeteria at the high school and bring coffee and bagels, and whoever came and wanted to chat would chat with and just respond to the public. So you can have those opportunities with a community at large to improve communications and have that kind of dialogue that is outside of the board meeting, but it needs to be done in collaboration with your administration. Does that help, Paul?
Yes.
Mrs. Stats, Mr. Gillette? Oh, Mrs. Stats.
So Gwen, as part of the larger community that Mr. Marini was mentioning, would it be okay?
be okay to include staff as that part of that consideration? I don't want to do like an end run around what you were saying before, but I guess I'm concerned about the perception, because a lot of what can be problems is perception, that the concern about communication and relationship that we have with the staff, I don't want them to be viewed as that's not valuable or dismissed because of the restraints that we have. If we can still address that concern, keeping in mind what you said.
Yeah, the administration can survey the staff, that's perfect.
Okay.
As well, right? That's no different, I mean, it would be a different survey, obviously, than you would send to your community members, but certainly that can be done as well, but it would be done by the administration.
Are you saying that we would, as a board, be requesting the administration to send out a survey?
Yes.
Okay.
Administration only acts at the will of the majority of the board.
Right.
So if these things are, I'm sorry, important to do, then certainly a majority of the board, someone could make a motion and second it. Now, keep in mind that the task that you give administration that takes them off whatever the district goals are, right? And that in this particular timeframe, administration is particularly busy.
Exactly, yes, we have to keep in mind the time that they would have to dedicate to anything that we might want to do or ask them to do.
Exactly.
And I also.
Just not doing it, I'm just.
Right, right, I understand.
Mindful, that's all.
And I'm also, the last suggested board goal about, especially regarding the addressing ongoing challenges of the pandemic, what's important though is the addressing that as immediately as possible. I do think that is definitely a concern within our district and among the board. So I'm just suggesting that we pursue that as well.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Thank you. Gwen, just to go back to the way I look at the question about interaction with the HEA, and I hope you can confirm for me if I'm looking at this right, but any relationship directly between the board and the HEA undercuts the chain of command in the district and therefore limits the ability of our administrators, our building administrators and our directors and other senior staff to do their job in managing the staff. And that's why there's a concern about a direct relationship between the HEA and the board. Is that a fair way of looking at it?
Absolutely a fair and accurate statement.
Thank you. As far as the other goals and questions, I'd like to also weigh in, you know, on the idea of checking our policies. I think for so long we have worked on policy from the perspective of making sure we're doing things legally correct, but that doesn't always mean doing the right thing. And I think we talk about the various vectors of equity, we really need to look at our policies and make sure we're doing the right thing and not just the legally correct thing. So I really think there needs to be effort, not just on a wellness check, but for our own sake, talking about how we go about doing the right thing.
I would agree.
Thank you, Mr. Pulsifer. Are there any other comments, Mr. Gillette, your thoughts? No, none? Okay. Mrs. Nurse?
I just, I completely understand what Mr. Pulsifer was saying about making sure that we're not undermining anybody, and I think what we were trying to say, Mr. Marini and I, and maybe it sounds like Jane as well, that there's collaboration amongst everyone, but if that is not possible, because we've heard, you know, even in my first meeting last week, the president of the HEA asking for those sit downs, those open conversations with the board, in what way would you recommend explaining to the public and explaining to that particular group that that's not allowed? Like, who would take ownership of that and how do we share that information that it's not?
Your administration, your administration is responsible for sharing that, and I will tell you that the president of every local bargaining unit knows that. He knows that. Steve Beatty knows that. You know, that's not new. That's not news to the bargaining unit, it's not new to, it may be new to some of the newer teachers who are brand new, newbie teachers, but it's not news to any member of an educational association, okay?
I would, I would just beg to differ with that, because being a veteran teacher who is highly involved in my union, that's not common knowledge for a lot of people within the union. So just, again, in open communication and hearing what a stakeholder or a group of stakeholders is asking for, there just needs to be, you know, our president here might know that, but I'm not sure how much of the membership, I do not agree with the fact that the majority of the membership knows that. I believe in watching emails come in, and my experience in my own district is that the perception out there is that the board has a lot of control or insight into what happens on a daily, each and every day. So I just, making sure that we can clearly and respectfully convey that to the community to help, again, reestablish this communication and these positive relationships, there needs to be clear information about what, as the board, we can do and what we can't do.
Well, I would agree that you need to be clear on what you can and can't do, and I think, I think very clear in saying what you can and can't do, but there are those channels, I mean, typically in most administrations, you know, the leaders of the association have regular meetings with administrators so that, you know, potential problems are headed off at the pass before they reach, you know, a stage where it becomes adversarial or a grievance is filed. There are a lot of, you know, discussions that can take place, things that can happen, but those are handled through your administrative chain of command, not through the board's chain of command. And so that's primarily the way that it happens in education.
Mrs. Stats?
Well, I believe this is already, there's been discussion about the possibility of clarifying the chain of command and making it more known and more explicitly known among everyone. So that can even be part of a goal, maybe related to communications, to clarify the chain of command and make that more known to everyone involved.
Okay. Districts, in fact, on their website, not so much for teachers, but for parents, actually, and I think you already do have who to contact when you have a concern that you want addressed.
And we are in the process of updating that for.
Okay, starting with your child's teacher and then the principal.
Yes.
If not satisfied with resolution at the principal level, who would go to next? You know, if it's a transportation issue, here's the director of transportation or whoever you contact first. You know, if it's an athletic event, you would talk to the coach, then you would talk to the A.D., then you would talk to the assistant principal, I would assume at the high school, and then the principal of the high school, and so things would work their way up the chain of command so that it's clear for your parents and community members, you know, because again, the best that you can do for your community is to provide them with access. How can you help them get their issues or concerns addressed? And so revisions to that would be very helpful, and having it available on your website would be helpful as well, so.
So, thank you very much. So I heard, I don't know if there are any more board comments, I heard interest in policy, and I was going to actually ask Dr. Intunis because as a, she's also a member of the board, non-voting, I wanted to see, Dr. Intunis, if you had any thoughts, comments about suggestions for board goals.
One of the things that I think we briefly talked about was enhancing the communication between and among board members themselves, and we've started some of that already, but that was one goal that I thought would be beneficial for everybody, both the board as well as the administration and the staff.
Thank you, that sounds good. So Gwen, so in terms of like, what is the process for, say, formalizing these board goals? I mean, obviously tonight is a work meeting, so we're not taking any action, but does that then we could, like I said, I heard policy, communication, things around communication, do we then kind of hash that on committee and then come back at our January 25th meeting? Maybe?
Sure.
Have another?
And recommend to the board, you know, what you would like to adopt, each committee or each committee that wants to, because, excuse me, essentially, the policy one would belong to the policy committee, right? And the soup eval and the board self eval belonged to the whole board, not to a committee, but the support and resources would belong to your CNI, curriculum and instruction, but also to finance, from, you know, providing resources to the ongoing challenges of the pandemic. So each committee could, would own a part of the board goals. And then a goal around enhancing communication among and between board members that would belong to the full board.
Got it. Mr. Gillette?
Yeah, so we have no policy committee, we have no finance committee to speak of on the board, so that's an issue right there. Also, I think, going back to an earlier issue about misconceptions in the public about what the board does, about a decade ago, we changed not only the way the committees work, the structure, but also the language in the committee bylaws, and we used a lot of language that gave, I think, gave the public the wrong perception. We talked about a committee of three or four members, board members where they were voting, committee members, non-voting committee members on the committee, getting the impression that committees are making decisions.
Right.
And my first several years on the board, you know, first three or four years, we didn't do that. Committees never had the perception they were making decisions, they were there to discuss issues with the administrators and to then report those out, with sometimes with suggestions, of course, if there's something to vote on for the board. But, you know, after a decade of this type of language, you got so, you know, I mean, we had an outgoing board member, I had her last meeting touting her achievements, at least one of her achievements as a board member, that I don't remember even discussing at the board level. It just was, this must have been something that they did in committee, kind of slipped it in, and all of a sudden it's a 15-year board member's achievement. So I think we need to go back and change some bylaws and reiterate to the public that if decisions are going to be made, they'll be made in public with the entire board. Thank you.
Well, okay, and let me just add this, just especially for your new board members, committees do not bind any board to action. Committees can only make recommendations, only the full board has the authority to bind the board to a particular action. So committees discuss and recommend, committees that are effective reduce the overall work of the board, it allows board members to do sort of a little bit of a deeper dive into a particular topic, but they are not the ones making decisions on behalf of the board. So they should make recommendations to the board, they should report to the board what was discussed, so that the full board has the opportunity to understand why that recommendation is being made, why it's an advantage to make that recommendation, here are some of the things we discussed that we're not recommending, so that you have a fuller understanding of the operation of the complete board.
I also want to point out that while we don't have a specific policy committee, I think years ago, Mr. Gillette, before, maybe even you were on the board, or Mr. Pulsifer, maybe you remember, we had like eight committees, and so.
I was on the board, I was on the board.
Oh, you were, okay, all right. I forget how long you were on the board, Mr. Gillette.
I had a lot of hair and it wasn't all white.
Back when they chiseled policies out of stone, Greg was there.
So I think that, you know, policy is, goes to each of the committees and then bylaws go to governance typically is how it's been at least in the last eight years or so, like you said, eight to 10 years. And then we don't have finance, but we have ops, which typically is run.
And operations, yeah.
Is liaison with the business administrator, so.
Right, operations, I'm assuming includes facilities and finance?
Yes.
Well, it doesn't, I'm sorry to jump in, but it doesn't really include finance, we took much of the budgeting out of that and put it to the governance committee, there's no ongoing oversight year-long over finance, that may be something that we could work on, ongoing oversight, for instance, we're going to be short of, budget's going to be terrible, we could, you know, in some universe, something I talked about two, over two years ago now, have a separate referendum just to increase the tax levy, or talk about that at least, but that takes six months. If you want to have a referendum in March, you got to start talking about that in September. Yet there's really no committee that has some continuity of finances all the way through the year that could even recommend in September, hey, I think we're going to need to have a, or at least consider a tax levy referendum to go over 2% in March. So, I mean, these are, there are problems with committees and bylaws, I think.
Well, you know, that's something that you can look at is how are our committees functioning? Are they all effective? Do we need them all? Is this setup the most efficient? Is there a more effective, efficient way to do it? You know, that's certainly something that you can look at if you so choose to. And maybe that is, you know, becomes a board goal, you know, evaluate our current committee structure and determine its efficiency. Do we need a governance committee that is separate and apart? Or would be better served by, you know, the three master committee system, you know, where you have operations, which is really finance and facilities, you have policy, and you have a curriculum and instructional committee, and then any other committees that are necessary, and some boards then add a fourth, which is communications or community engagement, okay? And then negotiations is only as needed, that committee functions in the years in which you're negotiating, and when you're not negotiating, the committee doesn't operate, okay? It's not ad hoc, it just doesn't have a function in years when there's no negotiations. So, you know, that may be something you want to think about and look at, you know? I would suggest get your policy manual looked at and then look at those bylaws and maybe, you know, you all could have a discussion around what makes the most sense, especially in these days when finance is such a critical component. Maybe we should have operations that includes specifically finance so that there is continuity that's looking at facilities and finance year-round on an ongoing basis.
So, thank you very much, Mrs. Thornton. This was.
You're welcome.
Very, very useful. It was new stuff for the ethics training for myself in terms of just the examples. Obviously, I've seen the code of ethics, but the way you presented it tonight was quite engaging, so thank you for that. And with the board goals and framework, I think we had a very robust discussion on it. I would say with 10 minutes left on the meeting, that what I heard tonight was the suggested board goals that you recommended, except for maybe the first two, that did not seem to have much traction, but those are things I do believe that we should aim for, we may not need to necessarily take a.
Make some goals, but.
Right, yes. That we do have committee meetings scheduled this week, and I do believe that there is time on the, those agendas to discuss board goals and perhaps then, based on this robust discussion, that board members would think about what they would like to elevate to those three or so goals that we would adopt as a board for this entire calendar year, is that what I understood for the calendar year?
Board year, it's a board year.
Board year, yes, board year.
January to January.
Which sounds good.
So reword next year.
Got it. And that sounds really good, because I was wondering how we were going to do a half-year kind of goal, so thank you, that's, that I think is very helpful. So I will take a moment to see if there are any further comments before I take a motion to adjourn. Do I have?
So moved?
Thank you, Mr. Pulsifer. Do I have a? Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Maroon, I think. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
You should be home before the second quarter of the game.
Thank you very much. Good night.